Yeah, we're going to call this meeting to order at seven oh two. All right. Go ahead and call the roll.
Mayor Fahad.
Here.
Here.
Councilman Perez Crespo.
Here.
There is a quorum present.
All right, thank you. Let's please rise for the invocation by Councilman Joseph Dion.
Heavenly Father, we come before you as we begin this city council meeting. We ask for your guidance, wisdom, and discernment as we deliberate on the issues facing our community. May our decisions be guided by your love and justice, always seeking the best for the people we serve. Grant us the courage to speak truth, to listen with open hearts, and to work together in unity. Help us to be a force for good, bringing healing, hope, and prosperity to our city. We pray for your blessing on this meeting and on all who participate. In your name, we ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone to our council meeting, April 28th. All right, we are going to start with, well, go ahead and set the agenda. Is there any item on the agenda, particularly like in the consent agenda, that anybody wants to pull for discussion or for any reason? Or any other item that you feel needs to be moved? Take that as a no? Okay, so we can set the agenda. Can I entertain a motion to set the agenda with the voice vote?
Yes. Make a motion to.
Can I have a second? Okay, so it'll be a voice vote. So to set the agenda, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no? Okay, so the agenda is set unanimously. Okay, we will move on to awards and presentations. We have four A, presentation of the Miami Springs Employee Service Award, recognizing Christian Perez of Public Works, heavy equipment operator for five years of dedicated service. Mr. City Manager, would you like to?
Yes, absolutely. Christian Perez, who I did not recognize him out of uniform a little while ago, is, has been with the city for five years. He's a rising star in the Public Works Department. And I know Juan can probably say a lot about him. He's, would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Councilmen. Christian has been with the department like the manager says for five years. There's nothing that we can call upon Christian that he won't do. He operates the cranes with expertise, careful. He's also fills in as supervisors when the supervisor's away. He also does on-call services for us overnight. He's always above and beyond what you expect of an employee, and he's a great asset to add to the department.
Awesome.
From the very beginning, from when I got here, every time I would ask for somebody or get something done, they would, okay, Christian, Christian, Christian. And he's the guy that'll get things done. So thank you very much for your dedicated service to the city and to the residents here. And this is something I like to do, so the residents know who works for them, that we're human beings, that work hard for them, day in and day out. So thank you very much for your five years.
Chrissy, want to say a few words? You're good? All right, well, hold on, we're going to come up and take a picture with you and give you something. I know, when you're someone who gets things done, you know what it means? That means they give you a lot of stuff to do. So I'll go ahead and read this. We'll get a wireless mic here eventually. "In recognition of five years of exceptional service to the city of Miami Springs, your dedication and contributions have been instrumental in our success. Thank you for your commitment to excellence. Congratulations on reaching this milestone." So you get this five-year pin, and you get this. So thank you, sir.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, absolutely. Oh, come on up. You'll take a picture with it. Take a picture with us, our ugly mugs, and then you can take a picture with the beautiful. Take a little, take a step sideways to the right there. Juan, will you just take a picture with him? Family, come on up. All right, thank you. And Christian, not only does having that kind of work ethic mean you get a lot of stuff, it means that eventually you'll be a police officer in Miami Springs Police. All right, so we are going to move on to open forum. We have one person who has signed up. Come on up, Neri Owens.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Neri Owens, 169 Coriden Drive on Persh Lake. The Miami Springs, I'm speaking to item Agenda 7A. The Miami Springs Charter, Article 6, Section 3245, lists duties of the Ecology Board under Section B to make special studies and surveys as requested by the city manager or the council. Did the city request this survey? Marcel Bosas of the, on the Ecology Board, surveyed five lakes in Miami Springs on February 8, 2025, with his goal of wanting to increase fishing in Miami Springs. Having lived in Miami Springs for 67 years, and lived on the lake he called Hammond since 2002, I question his survey and conclusions. The lake is called Persh Lake, and we have a homeowner's group that pays Southern Weed Control Management to spray algicide and restock the lake with grass-eating carp via a permit from the Florida Wildlife and Fish Commission. The documents that I gave you prove this. The lakes are not owned, Miami Dade County platted the lake to the homeowners when the homes were built in 1945, and protects the lakes of Miami Springs because they feed water to the wellfields. In Section 2443 of the Dade County Code, they are part of the Miami Springs Lower Well Field, that's my lake, and Miami Springs Upper Well Field. The lakes are not owned by Miami Springs, they're owned by the homes around the lakes. It's private property. In 1945, the city was granted about 100 feet of parkway along Hammond, which the city posted, no fishing, no swimming, et cetera. The city, and that's Persh Lake, by the way. That's where I live, that's what I'm talking about. The city does not want the liability if someone fishes and falls into the lake and drowns. The city will be sued. The 40 homes around Persh Lake have 65-foot wide lots, or about 2,600 linear feet around the lake, to the about 100 feet the city has. That's under 4%. The map in the survey shows this and thinks it's 10%. That's about 4%. So again, I question the report. How did he survey five lakes and get water samples in one day and evaluate quality of water, fish, and vegetation? Some of the lakes have no public access. Did he trespass? If he took his water sample from Hammond, where lots of ducks hang out, he got his ammonia reading with duck poop. His numbers show high ammonia, yet a pH of 7.4 for Persh Lake. I question the validity of his survey. Marcel Bosas' expertise has been how mammals use tree islands in the Everglades. And he monitors wildlife conditions for the Mikasuki in the Everglades. He wants to remove exotic fish from our lakes, replace them with bass and bluegill, aerate the water, and plant vegetation. What is that going to cost? Will the city spend $10,000 to $20,000 per lake of taxpayer money to do this, to improve private lakes? If the city allows fishing by the public, then the city can pay the yearly maintenance of each lake, and homeowners on the lakes are not going to pay the maintenance, which they pay right now. I personally pay $130 a year, and so do the other people around Persh Lake. The city has fishing on the Ludlum Canal and North Royal Point Sienna at the boat launch, where chickie huts were installed for fishing. I wonder how Marcel Bosas would feel about my writing a report that the city should let me go into his property on South Drive and pick fruits from his backyard tree. Of course, the city would never allow me to trespass and steal his property. Why does he want the city to allow him to trespass my property and steal fish? Please thank the Ecology Board and do none of his recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Okay, we are moving on to Item 6, Approval of the Council Meeting. Like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the council meetings.
Six A, B, and C, we can do them together?
Six A, B, and C.
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Call the vote.
Vice Mayor Santin.
Yes.
Councilman Dion.
Yes.
Councilman Lamas. Councilman Perez Crespo.
Yes.
Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We move on to Item 7. Much anticipated, given the, what we just heard. So reports from boards and commissions. 7A is the Ecology Board presentation on restoring the fishery of Miami Springs. Come on up.
Quite the hit piece, but that's fine. To lighten the mood. And to be clear, I'm not trying to push any agenda as an individual or as a member of the Ecology Board, and I'm not asking anything of the city, right? The couple of things we're trying to bring forth here is that there are underlying issues as to why we have undeniably bad water quality in a lot of these lakes. It's partly due to the physiology of the lakes, the size and the depth of them. Do I have my presentation available that I could kind of walk through some of these items?
Did you give it to the city clerk?
I emailed it to Sandra.
Yeah, it should be if you're on your agenda packet, I can pull it up.
All right, well, we all have it, and I know I went through it.
I have it.
So we have it in front of us. Do you want to go ahead and, while we get the PowerPoint up, so that we don't?
Uh, well, sure. So to go, I mean, oh, you have it?
Yeah.
That'll work. All right, so hopefully the rest of you guys can eventually see the PowerPoint. But to address the initial claim, right, that some of this stuff is just unfounded, right? How can you survey the water quality and the vegetation and plants in one day? For one, the water quality is easy. It's a YSI reader that you put in and you get a bunch of measurements. It's a fancier piece of equipment than what most lake companies will actually utilize for assessing the water quality. And as you mentioned, I don't have expertise in the aquaculture side, although PhD in environmental science. And I consulted with aquacultures biologists who have masters and PhDs in that to discuss the findings, because I don't know the water chemistry like some of these people do, so hey, what do you think? And their interpretation of this, the numbers which we saw, hopefully we could bring them up eventually, but was that they asked me initially, are you sure that these are correct? And I said, well, we use this unit, it was calibrated, and everything checked out based off of the physiology of lakes. When I explained to the size of them, that there's no vegetation, because a lot of them receive regular herbicide and algicide treatments, which is essentially copper sulfate. It kills every sort of plant, algae, and phytoplankton that it touches. And that's fine for, you know, clearing up the water quality, right, in terms of the clarity of it, right? You don't, I understand a lot of residents may not want to have plants in their waterways, and that's fine, right? Because again, we're not trying to suggest or impose recommendations on the residents, right? Especially because these lakes are private, right? Instead, what we're trying to say is there are underlying issues that if the residents want to know more about the water quality and why perhaps they've seen a decline in the fish over the many generations, there are some actual reasons, right, that we can try to assess, right? That's what this was preliminarily serving to do, right? And so, yeah, we can go to the next one. Yep, the next slide, please. So we're just preliminarily qualitatively mostly assessing these lakes, right? Quantitatively measuring the water quality, but then assessing fish habitat. Very simple to do, right? Because fish are pretty simple creatures, if we're thinking about on the broad scale of it. They need to breed and have, and when you say breed, it's like, what do they require? Well, sufficiently shallow depths. It has to be an appropriate slope and an appropriate substrate. Typically, it's like pea gravel type stuff. A lot of these lakes have very steep banks, which limits the amount of suitable nesting habitat for them to just the edges. It doesn't allow them to have several meters, right, encroaching out into the banks. And a lot of the time, the substrate, it's just mud, or sometimes it's exposed rock. So typically, it's not great substrate, but the fish will find little pockets here and there that are successful. So we have breeding pretty limited in these lakes. And then also, the depth of these lakes, right? Coupled with how small they are, five acres for Bass Lake. I believe South Bass Lake being the biggest, I think it's a little bit over 10 acres. That's still a pretty small lake in the grand scheme of things, especially when you think about the depth, because in South Florida, you have such glaring heat. What happens is that upper layer of water gets heated, and just like hot air, cold air, hot water rises, cold air sinks. So over time, as more of this happens, you get the thermocline form, right? Where you have hot water on top, cold water on bottom. And just because of the chemistry of it, you have little to no oxygen in the bottom cold layer, and plenty of oxygen in the top layer. However, that means your fish get squeezed into the top half. So having these small, deep lakes means you effectively lose, right, depending where that thermocline is, just say roughly 50% of your available fish habitat. And you already don't have great shoreline slopes on the side, they can't breed well. And when you have regular algicide treatments, that's going to kill a lot of the vegetation on the banks, preventing them from having forage as well as cover from some of the larger predators, right? And so again, this is just to say, hey, if we want to strictly improve fish habitat, one of, here are some of our recommendations, right, to improve fish habitat. If the residents don't want that, it's up to the residents, right? We're not trying to impose these things, we're just providing solutions, because a lot of people are unaware, right? So we can go to our next slide. So I kind of explained the situation for Bass Lake, right? So some recommendations. Again, if we want to improve fish habitat, right, you can do things by adding 3D structure, right? Having things like lily pads and brush piles, which are typically naturally occurring in lakes, right? It's just dead trees fall down, they end up in the water column. That's great 3D habitat for the fish. But in these small man-made lakes, you lack that cover. So you lack developing this mixed food web, right? Of having the small prey hide in the smaller structures that the big predators can't get into. And then the big predators need those larger 3D structures to hide behind and ambush the prey, right? And we say reconsider herbicide, right? Because the underlying problem with herbicide and algicide treatment says, yes, algae blooms are a problem in South Florida always, because you have high nutrient system, because of added fertilizers, you know, from yard runoff and pollutants. That gets into the water quality, and then so there's bad bacteria and algae, they'll thrive, and they'll just blow up in the summertime when you have plenty of nutrients and plenty of sunlight. And so as that starts to happen so excessively, nutrient gets out of balance, and you can get actually fish kills, right? As the algae will build up so much that they'll actually suck the oxygen out of the water column, and the fish starts to die off. There's been some accounts of that happening in the past, but it's not a pervasive issue that we see year in year in Miami Springs, right? But it is a contributor to poor water quality measurements, which we'll reveal a little bit later, right? And I already discussed the importance of adding, you know, gravel beds or appropriate substrate. Stuff like that would improve breeding success. And of course, if you were to go forth and try to do some of these habitat improvements, only then would it make sense to reintroduce native fish, right? Because if you do these habitat improvements, or if you introduce native fish before you do these habitat improvements, they're not going to have available habitat, and they'll just slowly die off, right? Or if you do habitat improvements, but you don't add native fish, there's a chance that exotics or invasive species who are already present might be able to just kind of capitalize on that new habitat and take over the lake more than what they already may. You can go to the next slide, please. And so South Bass Lake has slightly better nearshore habitat with more moderate banks. Again, not a whole lot of vegetation along the sides. So a lot of the same themes of what we're seeing here, of just similar, small, deep lakes, poor edge habitat. And then to address the point of, these lakes are private, right? Which is kind of why we targeted them to begin with. And that's because it's low-hanging fruit, right? Just saying, hey, here are some problems. Here are some potential solutions that if the residents want to go after, they can, right? We're really bringing this forward to the city today to make the public aware, who some members of the public may not be. And then also to inform the city that, hey, this is a discussion that people would like to have, that people have been trying to have amongst themselves for a long time. So the Ecology Board kind of thought, hey, let's bring this forward to the public so we can discuss. Again, not force any agendas down people's throats, right? So with that being said, South Bass Lake, they have a lake association like many of these lakes do. And they've already taken a lot of these efforts upon themselves, right? They've installed aerators, which was an expensive task, but we'll get into it. It's proven to already improve the water quality quite substantially, although there are still remaining issues. And they've done restocking of native fish to kind of help bring back some of the species that have been lost. Because the lake treatment company, who the Lake Association consulted with, told them that the lake was effectively dead several years ago, right? There's very, very few fish, and the chemistry was so out of whack, it supposedly had a lot of work, right, that had to be done to it. So it's come a long way. It's a success story that's continuing to build up. You can go to the next slide, please. So we already talked about much of these same strategies. You can go to the next one. So Lake Louise, similar issues as the Bass Lakes do, right? Pretty deep, although you have a little bit more heterogeneity in your seafloor, right? So 11 to 20 feet. So you have good kind of slope, a little bit of 3D structure, although not a whole lot of different cover types for the fish. So again, it's kind of open space that's underutilized by a lot of these species. And again, a lot of exotics taking over this habitat. We can go to the next slide. Same sort of recommended solutions. You can go to the next one. So the one that I call Hammond Lake, because, yeah, I'm a little bit younger, that's fine. And then just so, I put 90% private, and private meaning, right, it's enclosed by houses, right? The other 10%, there's the city ordinance, or not city, the county ordinance that says no fishing there. However, yeah, not 10%, it's not a big deal. It's very crude map, right? This is a free survey that I did in one day, right? Not a big deal. Again, the chemistry behind it, the underlying problems of the fish habitat is really the big issue. However, this particular lake had probably the best in terms of fish habitat, because it's sufficiently shallow, so you don't get that same thermocline effect of the hot water on top, cold water on bottom, and lack of oxygen. It's sufficiently shallow, so the whole system is kind of mixing, right? So when it's mixing, you have oxygen throughout the whole water column. Fish are able to utilize the entirety of the lake, and you have a little bit more vegetation on the bottom, right? So plenty of smaller habitats for the fish to utilize. However, there's not a lot of big 3D structure. Again, so that's really the big issue with this lake. You can go to the next slide, please. And yeah, so again, kind of the same issues, adding more breeding habitat, as well as that 3D structure is going to be the big issue here. And then one of the things I wanted to point out was that alleged 10% that is accessible, right? It's not technically, according to the signage, open for fishing or anything like that. But the Miami Dade County Ordinance doesn't necessarily apply here. So if this is something that the residents are wanting to make sure that it falls within their jurisdiction, and it's not a county problem, right? Or there's not a county ordinance that's backing these people from not being allowed to access it, that's something that perhaps should be reconsidered. So in case the residents call, hey, we have this person fishing on our lake, we don't want them to be here. Okay, they don't actually have legal grounds at this moment, according to this ordinance. And perhaps there's an avenue that those residents or the city could go about in trying to get that accomplished, right? So just trying to bring these things to attention, right? Next slide, please. All right, so De Leon Lake, this is kind of similar setup, except that the larger portion of the lake that's exposed, that one is not accessible to the public, that's owned by the city. But again, you're going to have the same issue of people coming in and fishing when they're, you know, not really a resident of the lake. And this was a kind of unique system in the sense that it was sufficiently shallow, so you would have, there's alleged benefits that you would think that we saw in the Hammond Lake, except you don't. You have essentially no vegetation in this lake, nothing on the bottom, very little on the sides. And this is due to an underlying water quality issue that's preventing the plants from really taking root. And then also, there are some grass carp in this lake. So it's potentially that any plants are able to kind of take root, those grass carp readily eat them up until they kind of run out of food, and then they'll trickle out of the system. Next slide, please. So kind of the same solutions here, except this one has the water quality issue being particularly heightened, because we can try to reintroduce some of the good native vegetation, and it may not necessarily take root right away, right? We might have trying to plant the plants, and they don't get established, or perhaps they do. But really, we're really going to benefit here from having increased aeration and circulation of this lake. Now, it does lead into the Miami Canal there, but there's not sufficient flow and circulation to get a good amount of dissolved oxygen in the water column. So you still do have really bad water quality readings here. You go to the next slide, please. And so these next couple of slides are just kind of explaining the general strategies and kind of understanding of aquaculture and basic principles that go into some of these kind of diagnoses and potential recommendations, right? This is kind of exemplifying what that thermocline looks like on the left, where you have the dissolved oxygen-rich upper surface water, and then you have depleted oxygen in the lower level, where the water is quite a bit colder. And that's where a lot of your nutrients will sink down into, right? So initially, if you have a very, very unhealthy lake, where you have a lot of pollutants, very poor dissolved oxygen concentrations, if you try to just circulate up that water, sometimes you get what's called turnover in the lake, where you'll get all those pollutants go to the surface, and they'll actually wipe out all the oxygen from the lake, and you get these big fish kills. So if we were to, like how Bass, South Bass Lake did, try to reintroduce circulation or aeration of these lakes, you have to be mindful of the timing of it, right? You don't want to do it in the dead heat of summer, because that's when you're more likely to have this negative turnover, and you'll kill off the lake. You want to do it at a time where the system is a little bit more stable, and then you could introduce the aeration, at which point, the diagram on the right will show, you'll have that dissolved oxygen getting circulated throughout the water column. Nutrients will get redistributed, plants will take them up, and then it gets back into the whole food chain for the fish, and you'll have increased productivity in your overall aquatic system. Next slide, please. And then so just kind of going back to the idea of fish habitat, right? You need to have this bottom-up approach, right? With really your phytoplankton being the basis of the aquatic food web, which is essentially single-celled photosynthetic plants, right? Just floating around in the water column. And those are going to be consumed by zooplankton, right? These tiny microscopic crustaceans. And those are going to get eaten by your tiny little forage fish, crawfish, your other detritivores. And then you're going to have larger bait fish getting consumed. And then you're going to have your larger bait fish, who are also kind of in the middle of the predatory spectrum. Those are going to be things like bluegill. And then you're going to have your larger and apex predators like the largemouth bass. This is what very rudimentary Florida native food web looks like in the freshwater system, right? Obviously, there's a lot more species that we have that are native, and then we have the complexities of these introduced exotics. But so this is kind of giving you an idea of, we need to have that pyramid shape, right? Where you have good, healthy base, so that we can have all the rest of the species be sustaining. And generally, in lake and pond management, you want to have a general ratio between 10 to 1 and 50 to 1 of bluegill and bass, right? Because bluegill are going to be the big forage items. And that's a big ratio, right? 10 versus 50. And that's really just because if you're at 10 to 1, you're going to be trying to really prioritize higher bass numbers. Whereas if you're at 51, that's more for like those hyper-managed trophy bass lakes, which I don't think that's what most residents would want, but, you know, let the people speak for themselves here, right? So that's, you have a pretty big window to operate with, and it's kind of up to the residents of the lake as to which avenue they want to go towards. Next slide, please. And so the table at the bottom is what's showing you some of the more important water quality metrics that we received. And just to give you an idea, because a lot of times, you know, if you're not familiar with some of this stuff, numbers are just numbers, right? And so for pH, our pH is pretty much good across the board, right? And obviously, it's color-coded. Green is good, yellow is kind of moderate, and red is- And obviously it's color-coded, green is good, yellow is kind of moderate and red is not good at all. Uh, we fall in a good pH range for all of our lakes, so no concern there. And then you have ardo, this is your uh dissolved oxygen, basically, right? So we actually have good dissolved oxygen in all the lakes, but you have low uh or you have bad oxygen reduction potential, which basically means, yeah, you have a lot of dissolved oxygen, but most of it is not actually available to the plants, animals in your system. That's really where our underlying is. And underlying problem is, and having bad ORP values is really um a the problem is stemming from high ammonia or ammonium levels and other uh kind of, you can think of harmful chemical compounds that mess up the chemistry in the water and prevent a lot of the plants and animals from actually utilizing the oxygen that's present, right? So uh this was kind of concerning, because if you look, you generally want to have ORP of higher than 150. And some of the least healthy lakes were, you know, 40 to 20. Uh, so very, very low numbers. And the most concerning ones are the ammonium and ammonia. Ammonia is the one that's particularly harmful to fish, uh as well as the plants in the system. And you generally generally want to shoot for an ammonia level less than half a milligram per liter, right? Our lakes had way, way higher metrics, 19, 4, 6, 4, 5, basically. Uh, so this is way, way higher, right? Multipliers higher than what is the recommended maximum level. Because once you exceed that half a milligram per liter, you start to have negative health effects on fish. They slow down reproduction and sometimes you even do get mortality, right? For the lower end of the spectrum, around 3 and 4, you're probably not going to have mortality, but you will have slowed uh down growth. They'll be kind of stunted, which is, you know, we see that across a lot of the lakes, pretty small fish. Uh, and then for the higher metrics, like we see Bass Lake has um an ammonia level of 19. This is where you start to get mortality events. And residents have actually reportedly uh have reported recently that they have seen mortality of fish that for apparently no reason. And it's not necessarily that it could be tied to ammonia, but it's a probable cause, right? We start to see that die off straight around four or five milligrams per liter and we're, you know, almost four times higher than that value. So uh to state that there is no water quality issue is a gross understatement uh for these lakes. And it's just a factor of how they were designed, right? They're man-made, they're small, they're deep. And so what happens is you get this bad anaerobic bacteria who produce all this ammonia and ammonium as byproducts. And so these things get in the water column. It's a part of nature, but it's excessive, right? Way higher than natural values. And so this is where introducing native plants into the system would help, because native plants are filters, right? They uptake oxygen as well as uh different pollutants and stuff like this, right? So that they can actually kind of filter out the water and improve it. And you see, there's this tiny graph on the uh the upper right-hand corner where it shows that in just 15 days, they were able to cut their ammonia levels basically in half. And this is through a controlled setting of having uh peltantra, which is the the purple flower, right? And so again, we know a lot of times residents, they want to have a nice, clear, open lake. And that's fine, right? It's up to the residents. If there are people who want to try to address water quality issues by introducing native plants, I'm just trying to show you some photos. There are some, you know, aesthetically pleasing options, right? Nice, pretty flowers, uh or if, of course, you don't want to do that, you don't have to, right? Next slide, please. Uh, and then we move on to the kind of final stages of the habitat, right? You generally want to have 10 to 20% cover, right? Where you say cover grasses, other vegetation structure, fallen logs, stuff like that, so that you can have uh good, healthy, right? Pyramid, right, of your trophic levels. Uh, once you do that, it really comes down to just uh making sure that there's enough breeding habitat so that you can sustain that population long-term, right? So introducing kind of breeding grounds for them, uh as you would typically find in a natural lake, as you see depicted on that lower left-hand photo, there's a bluegill beds. And then also if you can kind of be strategic and place uh the appropriate types of habitat, right? Like deadfall or other kinds of vegetation in close proximity to uh the nests, you're going to have really, you know, kind of bang for your buck in terms of being able to sustain a population, healthy uh breeding numbers. And again, you couple that with some of these other strategies, you'll have a healthy uh bass fishery, bluegill fishery, whatever the people of the lake want to manage for, you have options. So again, we're not trying to force anything down people, like that might have been misconstrued. Um, however, all we're trying to do is say, we do have clear underlying problems in habitat as well as water quality and these are some potential solutions. If people want to understand these things more, the ecology board is open to discussing those things and assisting residents, right? We're not providing financial assistance, we're not committing the city to anything. Maybe that's what people uh kind of get bent out of shape over and that's fine. This is intended to be a discussion amongst the city and the residents, because as this lady is passionate about her lake, so am I. And so are a lot of other people in Miami Springs, right? We don't have to butt heads and yell at each other about this. We can simply have a conversation and that's what this is about. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcel. So I just wanted to, so thank you again, Marcel, uh for for what you do with the ecology board. I know that you guys meet and 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 think of ways that we can, you know, improve the uh the environment here uh in in Miami Springs. I will say, um, I grew up in Miami Springs. I always hate when Neri says she's been here for 60-something years, because I've only been here 52 and it makes me feel like, you know, like I don't have the bona fides. But I grew up here fishing. These are private lakes. I would, you know, new people lived on the lake, would go in their backyard. Then I'd go into the neighbor's backyard, then the neighbor would yell at me and I'd go back onto my my friend's yard. Sometimes we would sneak on, sometimes the cops would throw us out. The cops would be like, I used to fish here too, but you can't, you got to go. So I understand it, right? I grew up with Aquarius rods and Tom and Robert Rec, who was closer to my my age, who was a real good friends with my brother. So I understand that whole part of it. I just want, because I did have a lot of people reach out today when this was on the agenda. And again, I think that this is wonderful, because I think it does uh bring awareness and I appreciate bringing awareness and getting the conversation going. I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that these are private lakes. Um, I I think anything with, and I can tell you from uh, I know people that are on the uh the association at uh South Bass Lake. I know that they've, I think they spent like $25,000 on aerators. They've they've got like 130 carp that help uh eat the algae. Um, and they're doing it because of uh they want improved water quality. And as a matter of fact, I I was told that the people at Lake Louise, because they have, they have a group of residents, they reached out to South Bass Lake. Obviously, Neri uh lives on what I used to call Payne Lake. I didn't know it was Persh, but I never heard that it was Hammond. So you're younger than me, but you know, and I'm younger than her, I guess. Um, but I can tell you, so certainly improving water quality, making it so that, you know, the the residents can swim in the lake, their kids can swim in the lake. Uh, I I think that it's great to bring that up when you start. And and I only bring it up because, and that might be why people kind of reached out to me, because the the memo, the memorandum uh subject is restoring the fishery of Miami Springs. Um, when it comes to improving the fish habitat or stocking the fish or getting rid of certain fish, I mean, that is so. To begin with, the city really has nothing, this is, these are private lakes. City has nothing to do with it. We can't endorse or take down the no fishing signs. Uh, one, because I don't think that the residents of the lakes want there to be fishing there. I don't feel like we we want to be inviting people to make this a fishing destination. As a matter of fact, I've had people live on South Bass Lake that tell me that, you know, I'll talk to the kids sometimes before I throw them out, like, hey, where are you from? And they're like, oh, we're not from around here. And they're like, how'd you come here? And they show them an app and it shows that 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 there's a spot on the app that sends people there. Uh, it's a huge liability. Somebody slips into the lake, they're sneaking in your backyard, they drown, like, it's huge. The the residents don't want that, these are private lakes. This has, I mean, the the city is double arms' distance from from this one, because these are private lakes. So anything around improving the fish habitat or 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 how they are stocked, or even, you know, in terms of improving water quality. It it seems like from what you gave us here, Neri, that the that you guys have also been working on this kind of thing. I think it's that it's good to uh bring up to conversation and and I I applaud you for bringing it up. Uh, but really, it's a conversation with the uh the owners of the lake. Because even as a kid growing up, I benefited from it, but I really shouldn't have been doing it, because it really wasn't my lake. But I was a little kid and maybe they looked the other way. But in terms of uh, you know, whether or not the lakes, the residents of those private lakes get together to do something to improve water quality or the fish habitat, that is absolutely on them and I think that they should leverage the ecology board. I got, I got a feeling that they already have people that they go to for that. I know South Bass Lake, it seems like uh Persh Lake uh is the same, but certainly reach out. We have people on our ecology board that that are knowledgeable. Uh, and and getting the conversation going is great. Uh, but I did hear from some people that were like, hey, listen, I don't think that we want to be a fishing destination that we're promoting for people to come. Um, and uh, and in terms of along Bluebird on South Bass Lake and along Hammond on Persh Lake, uh, there is no fishing there and uh, you know, and if little kids know people on the lake and they get in and they don't get thrown out and, you know, because they're 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 uh visiting somebody that they know on the lake, that's fine. But in terms of opening it up, uh, because I, there there was that recommendation in here about about perhaps allowing. It, that would be uh completely up to the residents of the lake and I I don't see that there's support for that, because it's too much of a liability. But certainly in terms of improving the uh the ecology of the of the waterways, I, you know, I'm all for having that discussion and thank you. Thank you for your uh for your work in bringing that to light. Um, so sorry that I was verbose there. Do you guys have anything you want to add?
To the chair. I mean, I want to second, obviously, what you were mentioning in reference to the private, you know, uh lakes and the residents' right to protect that. Uh, I'm in agreement with you in reference to that. I think his intentions, Dr. Bozis, is he obviously knowledgeable, to say the least, and is the intention of public awareness. And there's nothing wrong with that. I think that we should take advantage of uh a lot of uh talented people that we have, especially on the ecology board. So I think it's just trying to help out our community and make it more uh awareness. Uh, you know, with fish habitat, the quality of water, I mean, why would you be against something like that? So to me, uh, I think we um is true to what his intent was. I believe he's just trying to put a little bit of public awareness and overall, and that can't be a wrong thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to say something that I attended the first meeting when Mr. Bozis presented his presentation and I was uh kind of shocked about the the quality, the healthy, uh the health of our lakes. Um, but yes, you're right, they're private. So there's really not much that we could do as a public institution. But I do appreciate the work that he has brought here today, his studies and the ecology board. And like Councilman Santin said, we're bringing this awareness to the uh residents of that lake, whether they act upon it or not, I, that's a good question. But I guess they, it's up to them.
At least there, there's good resources, right? I I spoke with people that are on the South Bass Lake uh, you know, HOA and that that this is their project. I mean, when you're, when you're asking everybody for a a big $750 assessment, you need to, you need to know what you're talking about. Uh, and and uh, as uh Marcel said, it's been a success story. They put in the aerators, they put in the carp, they've done, you know, they do, they do like a demucking treatment. So uh, I I would encourage all the Lake HOAs to uh to reach out to uh to South Bass Lake. If you guys need, it's Rob Youngs and uh Danny Rayala. Um, and uh, but also to reach out to the ecology board and let's, let's leverage the, you know, let's have the conversation, leverage the knowledge that we have in in the city. Uh, so, any other comment? Nope. Okay, all right, let's move on to the agenda. Thank you again. Uh, eight, we have no public hearings. Let's move on to item nine, consent agenda. Uh, I'd like to entertain a mo- a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve uh consent agenda eight, nine, A, B, and C.
I'll second.
All right, and so we'll just do a voice uh vote there. So all in favor of approving nine, A, B, and C, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. The motion carries unanimously, thank you. Let's move on to old business. We have none. New business, 11A. We have consideration of the Board of Adjustment's recommendation to deny an administrative appeal by the owner of 300 Falcon Avenue and affirm the city administrative official's determination relating to 200 North Esplanade Drive. So I will pass that along to our esteemed city attorney.
Uh, Councilman Lamas is going to be recusing himself from the discussion on this item. Uh, he sat with the Board of Adjustment um at that hearing. So he'll be exiting the room and and filing the appropriate paperwork. So this is um the city council tonight, you have two things that you can do. You can either affirm or you were, you can request a separate hearing on the item before you. Um, and so I'll just give a a really brief overview of what this is about. Um, in November 2024, uh, one of our residents filed an appeal with the city uh related to her neighbor's property. Um, and what she was challenging and is challenging, an administrative determination relating to the setbacks at her neighbor's property. And she requested that the city revoke the building permit that had been issued and issue a stop-work order to enjoin the improvements that had been proposed and are under significantly underway uh by the owners, by her neighbors. That matter, that appeal was heard by the city's Board of Adjustment on February 28th, 26th, I'm sorry, of this year. There was a, I would say, four-hour hearing where the Board of Adjustment um heard from both the applicant as well as staff. Each side presented their arguments uh and responses. There were, there was uh, there was a mini-trial basically here in chambers. And at the conclusion of that hearing, uh, the Board of Adjustment voted 4 to 1 to deny the appeal and uphold the city's determination. Um, so tonight, you can either, and and you have the record before you. Uh, you can either affirm the Board of Adjustment's recommendation, uh, which would mean that you are denying the appeal and upholding the city's determination. Or you can request a further hearing. Um, if you affirm the Board of Adjustment's decision, an appeal can be taken by, there's a a list of people who can file this type of appeal, including the applicant. Um, and that can be appealed to you and you would then sit in a separate hearing. In either scenario, if you request a separate hearing or if an appeal is filed, that would be coordinated for a future date. Um, we've tentatively held Wednesday, May 28th as that hearing date, subject to your availability, but that's sort of internally what we have uh thought about.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I open it up to the council.
I make a motion uh to um affirm agenda item 11A, which is consideration of the Board of Adjustment's recommendation to deny an administrative appeal by the owner of 300 Falcon Avenue and affirm the city's administrative determination relating to 200 North Esplanade Avenue. Drive, sorry.
Uh, Vice Mayor, thank you. The earlier at the, at the beginning of the meeting, I I I circulated a resolution. My apologies that it wasn't part of your agenda package. Um, the resolution is a draft right now, but the resolution would provide for exactly what you just said. So I just, that that's what you would be adopting.
Reset with the uh.
Not, not a big deal, but what I'll, if I can read into the record, it's a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, affirming a recommendation of the city's Board of Adjustment to deny an appeal by Michelle Ferreira, the owner of the real property located at 300 Falcon Avenue, Miami Springs, Florida, 33166, and affirm the city administrative official's determination relating to a setback at 200 North Esplanade Drive, providing for a final order and providing for an effective date. Um, so this resolution that you each have a copy of uh would simply uh um, put down to paper what you are voting on tonight.
All right, do we have a second? So the, so the motion is to affirm the Board of Adjustment's recommendation, correct? Okay, do we have a second for that?
I second the motion.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? Do you guys want to chime in?
No, I I I am aware of the meeting that the Board of Adjustment held in four hours and I I trust their judgment.
Agreed.
Okay, yeah, and and again, uh, this can be appealed and come back to us if if that's what uh the persons choose. So, okay, so we have a a motion and a second. Call the rule.
Yes.
Councilman Dion?
Yes.
Councilman Perez Crespo?
Yes.
Mayor, if ahead.
Yes.
The motion carries 4 to 0.
Okay, we move on to 11B, appointing a director and alternate to the Miami Dade County League of Cities Board of Directors for the 2025-2026 session. Uh, I will uh actually hand it over to our current uh member of the Board of Directors of Miami Dade County League of Cities. Uh, so now, all of us can go to the League of Cities meetings. You do not have to be a Board of Director, uh, a member of the Board of Directors. Uh, but uh, I I want to hear from our current uh board member. What do you think?
Yeah, uh, at the end of the day, uh,
Yeah, at the end of the day, as our mayor has just mentioned, all of us are, you know, involved as much as possible. Obviously, we have to pick today a head, director, and a alternate. But ultimately, the circumstances are there, that one of us wants to participate. Just a matter of talking to Erica and letting her know that we want to attend. So ultimately, we're all involved, if we all want to go. So it's not a particular person that gets picked today, and that's it, and, and the alternate, all of us could have a, a say in it. But ultimately, I recommend, you know, that we do take a, a director and an alternate, that has to be more obligated to show up to these League of City meetings, which are important, because we get a little sense of, of what's going on, and the things that are going to affect us ultimately. But since I think you're kind of a, one of these guys that are a people's person, right? But I think that you also look like you want to get involved with these types of stuff, so maybe I would recommend it, if you want to be a director. But I think any of the other guys as well could step in there and be the alternate. But my recommendation would be for you, Joseph, if that's what you would want, and then any of the gentlemen's over there that like to go in. I think it's time to pass the baton on to somebody new.
Councilman Dion, would you like, you've been nominated. I don't have to pour a nice bucket of ice water on you for that nomination.
Thank you, George. I'd be honored to represent the city in the league.
Okay, and then alternates? Are you interested?
Are you?
We're all going to go anyways.
Okay, well, Councilman Lamas, defer to me, so.
All right, okay. So, so I'd like to entertain a motion then, to appoint Councilman Dion as, as our director, Board of Director for the Miami-Dade League of Cities, and Councilman Perez Crespo as the alternate to Miami-Dade League of Cities. Is there a motion? Do we need, do we need one, or do we just, on consensus?
Consensus.
Okay, great. We have consensus. Everybody's in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, George.
Okay, thirteen, reports and recommendations from our city attorney.
None this evening.
Okay, city manager. Okay, I take that back. Now you missed your shot.
Welcome to your first substantive meeting. This is exciting, and happy early birthday to our city manager.
Thank you.
He shaved for his birthday.
No, it's growing back.
All right, reports from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick update today. A while back, we applied for an MPO grant for the, I was calling it the freebie system, but it's for the on-demand service, transit service. You have freebie, you have circuit, you have a number of different companies that provide it. You see it in, a, a number of other cities have already implemented it. So we received this grant. We've been awarded this grant. Contract is forthcoming. But I just want to let you know that we received this grant. It funds fifty percent of the service for up to three years, and then you can apply again in three years. So, pretty exciting. So we're ironing out the details of the, the agreement, and, you know, the, how it works. I already spoke with Mayor Dino from Virginia Gardens, he's excited. Said that he continued partnering with us. This would be in lieu now, in lieu of the, the bus. So we would provide this, and a resident would, either, there's a phone number they can call, or they, what you want to call it, they, or on the app, request a ride to the Mylums, or any other restaurant, or any other place within radius here in Miami Springs. They come, they wait in their house, and get picked up, taken over there, and then do the return service. So, anyway, I just want to let you know that. That should be forthcoming in the next couple of months.
All right, Assistant, Assistant City Manager?
We have our third annual Mother-Sun Field Day on May second, so I encourage the residents to register for that, similar to what they do for the daddy-daughter in February. We also have, the golf course is beginning, an adult beginners golf clinic at the country club. So if you want to sign up for that, it starts on May fifth, and it's on Tuesdays and Thursdays, Thursdays, ladies only. And then Wednesdays is co-ed, so I encourage you to sign up for those. We have a Mother's Day tennis clinic on May eighth, from ten AM to eleven-thirty at the tennis center. And then we have a few pre-registrations. We have the fourth annual Miami Springs, Virginia Gardens Family Bike Scavenger Hunt. We encourage you to register for that. We also encourage you to register or get, apply for memberships for pickleball and tennis at the, our tennis facility. And then we have a few basketball leagues that are at the recreation center that we encourage residents to sign up and pre-register for those. That's all.
Thank you. All right. Reports or recommendations from our city clerk?
Just a reminder that we have a council workshop next, next week, May eighth, at six PM, right here.
Okay, so let's hear from the city council. We'll start with seat one, Vice Mayor Santin.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, welcome to all our new council persons and new mayor. Appreciate it. Definitely did not get used to this, it's not typical, and especially our future meetings, I don't think we're going to get out before eight o'clock.
Yeah.
So, but welcome. And I also want to remind, as always, a little stuff that makes our city so special, Curtis Mansion is having on Saturday, if you want to get dirty, helping improve the garden. As I don't, many might not know, David Furchild and Glenn Curtis were actually very good friends, and they collaborated on a lot of things with aviation, but also, obviously, the Furchild Garden was part of our Curtis Mansion, and they're trying to restore that. I think that's just a win-win thing for everybody in our community, including Glenn Curtis Mansion. So on Saturday morning, at nine AM, if you want to go get dirty, and, and start planting hibiscus plants and so forth, I would encourage you, I'll be there.
I'd like to thank all the residents for being here today. It's because of you guys while we're here, and I'm looking forward to hearing how we could continue to improve this great city. That's, it's already a great city. Also, in my few weeks in office, I'm highly impressed with the staff, city manager, assistant city manager, clerk's office, attorney's office. Everybody has been a top-tier team, so I look forward to working with you guys. And I'm grateful also for our predecessors that have set the bar high, and I look forward to doing great things with all you guys.
Thank you. Councilman? Councilman Lamas?
I was going to say, thank you for keeping the meeting quick and succinct, but, Councilman, just corrected us, it's not a regular meeting, but, kidding aside, I'm, I'm really happy to be here. Like Joseph said, the past two weeks have been really engaging with all the residents, and I'm really happy to hear from everybody and how active the community is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Perez Crespo?
Well, I'm sorry, Councilman Lamas, it was quick, but now I get to talk. So, I wanted to say, last week, I was invited to attend a public meeting of the Hialeah Board of Planning and Zoning, which I found informative to see the proposals by architects, developers, and attorneys that had proposals before the board. On Saturday, I was at an interactive activity at the Miami Springs Women's Club called "In Their Shoes: Teens and Dating Violence," where participants role-played a simulation about teen domestic abuse. I would like to publicly thank Denise, Officer Denise Garcia, and Lieutenant Albert Vargas for taking the time to talk to the youth who attended. I'd like to mention also that the Women's Club has a medical loan closet, so if anyone needs a wheelchair, a walker, a bath chair, crutches, please contact them directly. This Sunday, the Miami Springs Lions Club has their monthly fish fry, shrimp, and fish dinner from four to seven, open to everyone. Congratulations to one of our Eagle Scouts, Kaden Ofkarich, son of Kim and Thaddeus Ofkarich, who last week graduated from Miami-Dade Fire Academy. Speaking about the Scouts, life scout Maximo Samatine completed his Eagle Scout project, the installation of three park benches along the bike path on Westwood Drive. I know that public works needs to modify them a bit, but thank you to Troop Three-Three-Four for all the hard work you do for the community. Last week, Miami Springs Senior High Golden Hawks baseball team shot out iMatter Academy. Today, they won nine to two against the Spartans from Monsignor Pace. Game two of the regional four-dash-three A's semifinals is tomorrow, three-thirty at Miami Springs Senior High. On Earth Day, our local public library hosted International Dark Sky Week, where we had the pleasure of having Miami-Dade County Mayor Dani- Daniela Levine-Cava in attendance alongside Mayor Fahed, and Councilman Lamas, and myself. Lastly, if you haven't done so, pick up the latest issue of the River Cities Gazette, where I wrote a story about the closure of Ray's Taekwondo Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, in my first meeting here, I can't help but notice, under here, there's a button and a big sign that says, please do not touch this switch. And I just, I can't, can I touch it?
Oh, did you touch it?
All right, after I, maybe, God, well, I'm going to touch it. You guys may want to get out of here, but I want to see what's going to happen. I, I just can't, like.
The Police Department report to us. It should be connected to the Police Department.
All right, well, I'm going to, I'm going to hit the button. You're not going to put that in front of me. It's, okay, so, did, did just want to underscore that Thursday, May eighth, which is a week from this coming Thursday, is our workshop. That workshop's going to be here in the council chamber, chambers, right? So it's our workshop. So throughout this whole campaign season, if I had a nickel for every time a candidate mentioned Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street, I'd be a millionaire. So that, that is what we're going to be talking on Thursday. We're going to be, so I, I'll just remind everybody, oh, good Lord, how, how many years ago was that? When the economic, the Business and Economic Development Task Force, that was chaired by the late Mark Tobbridge, the, one of their recommend, a lot of their recommendations were about Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street. And at that time, we started the process of trying to find somebody that could come in and do an analysis of Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street to see what, what we could do to kind of help that area. And so, that was done through our city planners, CGA, and economic analysis was done, and a whole, a whole thing was done, and it finished right before our outgoing, outgoing council. So we held on to it for the incoming council. So you will not want to miss that workshop. We have discussed, I think all of us publicly, that we want to see what the market analysis, and what people that know about land use and planning and zoning, what they say about what, what we could do to try to revitalize what we're calling Southeast Springs, right? That includes the Abraham Track, but, but primarily Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street. So we want to look at that, we want to have a, you know, see what they, what the recommendations are, and then have a public debate about it, and see if there's anything there that, that, that we feel as a council, and as representatives of the community, that, that could help that, that area that needs some, it, it needs a, a little bit of, of help in terms of revitalization. So, you will not want to miss that. That is six-thirty, I believe, start here in the council chambers, right? Six, six o'clock. I am going to miss all of my senior awards. Okay, so, six o'clock on Thursday, the eighth, don't miss that. Thank you for everybody who came. And with that, I bring this meeting to order, to, to a close at eight oh five. Thank you. All right, I'm pressing the button. What happened? What happened?
I'm here, ready.
And it says on, I switched it to on, I don't know what it did.
I forwarded an email. They got a move, I guess. I could have had. I'm going to just reach out. Okay, I'll take a, I'm going to take a look at it.